Let's go ahead and call this October 2022 council meeting to order. And Councilmember Schaefer, if you can do our flag salute.
Please follow me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, sovereign, and all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson is absent. Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
And Mayor Karpinski-Costa is absent.
Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, October 27th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
All right, thank you, Danielle. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October 19th through 25th, 2025 as United Against Hate Week.
All right, because this is somewhat of a unique proclamation, I wanted to undertake this particular proclamation myself. Okay, so we're going to read the proclamation and then ask for comments, but following the proclamation, we'll be inviting our public safety officials, our police chief Turkot and Metro Fire Chief Michael Johnson, I believe he's here along with other representatives, to the podium to share a few remarks in support of the proclamation. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October 19th through 25th, 2025 as United Against Hate Week, whereas the City of Citrus Heights is a community that respects diversity and affirms our commitment to safety and belonging of all residents; and whereas hate presents a threat to communities everywhere and creates an atmosphere of fear and division; and whereas the United Against Hate Week campaign embodies our collective commitment to fostering an environment where every member of our community can live, work, and flourish without fear of hatred; and whereas the City of Citrus Heights is dedicated to preventing and opposing hate and intolerance in our communities; and whereas education, compassion, critical thinking, and cooperation are keys to unlocking understanding and embracing difference between people; and whereas United Against Hate Week provides an opportunity for residents, schools, businesses, faith organizations, and community leaders to work together toward a safer and more welcoming future. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights declares the week of October 19th through 25th, 2025 as United Against Hate Week in Citrus Heights and encourages all residents to join in reaffirming our shared values of inclusivity, compassion, and respect. And now I will invite our police chief Kirk Turkot and our Metro Fire Chief Michael Johnson to the podium, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. Alex Turkot, your chief of police, I'm joined today by Assistant Chief Mike Johnson from SAC Metro Fire. We're both here today just to represent not only the first responders in the community of Citrus Heights, but also all of the government entities and social service entities that service our area. We're here tonight just to wholeheartedly support this proclamation. From our service delivery standpoint, we're here to serve every member of the community and to protect every member of the community. No one should have different services because of their race, creed, national origin, or any of those great differences that make us unique. And so not only are we working hard to protect folks, we want to make sure people feel free access to services, that they'll come forward if they need assistance, they know that we're here for them, and that we'll do what we can to provide the best service possible for any member in our community. So with that, Assistant Chief Johnson, if you had anything?
Yes, thank you. Well said, I echo those sentiments. Good evening, everybody. Mike Johnson, Assistant Chief Metro Fire. As your city's fire department, our mission is to provide professional and compassionate service to all of the citizens of Citrus Heights. So we are here, we understand when you call 911, you don't get to choose who shows up, but we don't take that lightly. We show up and treat everybody the same, with the same level of professionalism, no matter where or who. So we stand in support of this proclamation, thank you for inviting us to speak on it, and kudos to the City of Citrus Heights for this.
Thank you so much. Comments from my fellow council members?
No. I think this is a great resolution to recognize that hate is a thing that's in our community. Unfortunately, we really need to really be conscious of that as we speak. Our words are important, and we shouldn't be promoting hate in any way, shape, or form.
I agree, and I also want to point out that it's just not in your personal interactions, hate also exists online, where you feel like you're faceless and that you can hide from folks. Your actions and your words still impact individuals, so be very careful, as Councilmember Schaefer said, of the words that we use, whether in person or online.
Very well said, my fellow council members, I agree, hate has no place here in Citrus Heights. Thank you. All right, with that, we will have our item number five. The next item, please.
The next item is presentation number five, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October 2025 as National Manufacturing Month.
Okay, I have asked Councilmember Schaefer to read this proclamation.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I'd like to invite Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance President Kevin McGrew and Executive Director Dean Peckham to the podium, please. All right. This is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October 2025 as National Manufacturing Month, whereas manufacturing is celebrated nationally on the first Friday of the month of October to show future workers, parents, and those interested in making things of modern manufacturing is all about, and manufacturing is the backbone of American economy, driving innovation, productivity, and competitiveness while providing high-quality jobs and strength in communities across the nation; and California has the largest number of manufacturing firms with representation across virtually all manufacturing sectors. Small manufacturing firms, those 50 employees or less, are the backbone of the industry representing more than 95% of manufacturing firms in California, whereas manufacturers in Citrus Heights produce essential goods, create the supply chain opportunities, and play a critical role in advancing technologies and improve the quality of life; and increasing the exposure of manufacturing careers within local areas to our students, educators, builders, owners, media, and politicians is needed to bridge the gap in skilled labor shortage, create viable career pathways for students and adults. Whereas the City of Citrus Heights offers a sincere appreciation for Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance and their partners for their outstanding support of manufacturers and recognize that California was built on manufacturing and its importance of manufacturing business in sustaining our environment. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby designate October 2025 as National Manufacturing Month and encourage all residents to recognize the importance of manufacturing in our community. And I could say that this is, several years ago, we kind of looked at this, we had so many events in October that we couldn't squeeze it all into one day. So we kind of said, I think the industry kind of adopted the whole month, so. Kevin, Dean, would you like to add something?
Go ahead.
Yes, I would. First of all, I would like to thank Citrus Heights, the council members. Manufacturing is important. I guess that sums up the resolution. One. Two, manufacturing has found a home. There are a number of manufacturers in Citrus Heights, and there are a lot of community members here that actually work in manufacturing throughout the region. On April 14th this year, we had our second annual manufacturing challenge, and I would like to thank Councilmember Middleton for attending the event with her mother, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Correct.
She was not able to compete, it was only for high school students, but she was supercharged and there nonetheless. And the third thing I would like to say is we'll be back. We've already planned our event for 2026. It's in March this year, we moved a little bit earlier to allow more students to participate, and we very much appreciate the support, and the event center works fantastic, and we'll see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, Dean?
Nope. I'll let Kevin take the lead tonight.
All right, well, we would like to present it to you and take a picture.
Yes.
Perfect. They'll take a picture and then we'll send it to you.
Oh, perfect.
So you don't have to worry.
Okay.
I'm so sad to miss the event this year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm glad.
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 Planning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Citrus Heights. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights hereby recognizes the month of October 2025 as National Community Planning Month.
All right, we'll welcome a few words.
All right, thank you. I'm, uh, it's a pleasure to be here and I appreciate the proclamation. I'm joined by Allison Bremida. She's our longest-tenured, uh, community-owned department member and, um, has shaped how the city's grown. Um, while our department might be s- small, the impact of the work we do is anything but. Um, we are tasked with guiding thoughtful development and maintaining neighborhood character, uh, building housing opportunities, supporting businesses, and there's a lot that we tackle. Um, and our team does a great job at, uh, making, keeping this community vibrant. Um, I'd like to thank the council or other city departments that we work with, as well as our community partners. It really is a, a team effort and we couldn't do without you and we're very happy to be here and appreciate the proclamation.
All right. Allison, anything to add? Okay, comments from council members.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, and A- Allison, I'll, that is a, a wonderful color you're wearing there. It is festive and it just, it looks great on you. Um, so, uh, but I just want to appreciate you guys as a, an incredible resource for us. We often have lots of questions when it comes to, um, what codes are and what's allowed and, and, uh, and you are right there for us and I, I just wanted to extend my deepest appreciation for you, for your efforts.
Thank you.
You know, Allison, I love you dearly for all the work you've done with the Sayonara area, right? That entire development and just making sure you did whatever you could to, to meet the need and to make it happen. And I think sometimes we also forget about the, the ADU project plans that are offered free on our city website that I know you had a strong handhold in and trying to figure out, how do we do this? How do we make it happen? And making sure that we're always compliant with whatever state, federal rolls down to us and making sure that you present it in a way that we can understand, but it also helps to enhance the community rather than hurt it. I appreciate your department, Casey, and all that you guys do for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And for me, i- it's really giving us a visual idea of what could be in addition to what is, you know? Making great use of our community and how it looks and how it'll look and feel in the future. So, thank you for that and we'll join you for a picture.
Thank you.
I know.
Next item is presentation number eight, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights, proclaiming the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week.
All right, in the spirit of equity, I, I'm handing this to Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, and last, but certainly not least, I'd like to invite, uh, Police Services Supervisor Miller to the podium, please.
I bring friends, amazing team.
Awesome. More than mayor. We appreciate you all. Okay, so this is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming the second week of October 2025 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated public servants who play an essential role in promoting safe, healthy, and livable neighborhoods throughout the fair, uh, application of municipal, state, and federal codes, and these officers face diverse and complex ch- challenges, working with, and working with the dedication and professionalism to resolve concerns related to housing conditions, property upkeep, zoning requirements, and overall neighborhood stability, and the work of code enforcement officers extends beyond compliance as they serve at the front lines of community engagement, interacting daily with residents, property owners, and business to uphold community standards and build trust. Code enforcement officers demonstrate a strong commitment to collaboration by partnering with neighborhood associations, encouraging citizens' involvement in, uh, reporting blight, and working closely with city staff such as our pop team and beautification crew to show Citrus Heights' cares. And whereas the efforts, uh, uh, efforts safeguard public health and safety, protect property values, and support the visual appeal of economic vitality of the City of Citrus Heights and the State of California recognizes the significant contributions of code enforcement officers and encourages communities to celebrate their role preserving the quality of life for all. Now, therefore, being resolved, the City of, Council of the City of Citrus Heights is hereby complain, proclaim the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Uh, and all, and, and invites all residents and community partners to join in honoring the dedication, professionalism, and service of our code enforcement officers.
All right. We would welcome your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and members of council. I'm Police Services Supervisor Deborah Miller with your Citrus Heights Police Department and on behalf of Chief Turcot, Commander Frye, Lieutenant Dunning, we are here today to celebrate an amazing team. At least, I think so. I went to begin by thanking our city council for recognizing our incredible team this evening during Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. It's truly an honor to stand before you with gratitude and remarkable, with a remarkable group of professionals who make up our code enforcement unit. This week allows us to pause and reflect on their hard work, dedication, and the important role they play in keeping our community safe, clean, and vibrant. To Senior Code Enforcement Officer Dominic Grillo, Code Enforcement Officers Angelique Clark, Nicole Ollinger, Dylan Burke, Jessica Sosa, and our Program Assistant Tammy McCormick. Each day, you all go above and beyond building relationships, solving problems, and partnering with residents and business owners to improve their quality of life in Citrus Heights. Your teamwork, professionalism, and commitment demonstrate what public service is all about, and I couldn't be prouder to work alongside you. Thank you for everything that you do.
Well, thank you so much. Um, do I have comments from my fellow council members?
We think you're awesome, too.
I think you.
No, no, great job. I really appreciate you guys having, uh, having you out there.
Thank you.
And I just want you guys to know that when you get calls about enforcement at my house, it's not me, it's my mom, okay? I, I do, I do not call, I try to mind my business, but yeah. But in all seriousness, thank you guys so much for what you do because you keep our neighborhoods safe, clean, and, you know, within code, and I can't complain about that.
Well, I've been wanting to, you know, use this term about your department for a while, and you are the Swiss Army knife of the police department. You know, you never know what you're gonna walk up and encounter, but you always have a tool for the job. And so, we appreciate you. Thank you so much for doing what you do every day and keeping us safe on a whole totally different level that you don't get enough praise for. So, thank you.
Thank you for kind words.
And we will join you for a picture.
Just, uh, let's bring everybody kinda down this way. Cause we've got this podium here. Yeah. There we go. All right, everybody looking, one, two, three.
All right.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is public comment. Members of the public may address the city council during the meeting. We ask that you please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to three minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And Madam Vice Mayor, I have three public comments for this portion of the agenda and then two on item sixteen.
Okay, let's have them.
I'd like to call first to the podium, Mr. David B. Shelton.
Welcome, Mr. Shelton.
Good evening. My name is David B. Shelton. I have a lot of questions. It's been four months since we had our fireworks ordinance enforced, and I want to share with you an update on that ordinance. The law was modified and went into effect in May of 2025, and it included a copy of Commander Heights, uh, Citrus Heights Commander Wells' letter of March 5th, 2025, to Chief of Police Turcot on fireworks analysis. There's a paragraph of importance about click and fix for firework incidents, and I found out with the support here that it's better in code enforcement. I cannot give more kudos than code enforcement. They really do a wonderful job. Individuals pri- previously have been not, had to pay a great amount of money, and the law was written so that you get a pass for the first one. That was the Fourth of July. We're coming up on New Year's, and New Year's is when the teeth of the law come into effect. That's when it's gonna be a chomp of $7,000 if you're cited for fireworks. It's not a slap on the wrist, it's a big, big fine. So, I want to address the operations Commander Wells' letter. Uh, extensive details about the payment of fines for the fireworks activity was early, or presented so that the council could find out hundreds, well, tens of thousands of dollars are expected to come in, and the importance of photos and telephone calls and calling to code enforcement is important. The police department expects us, the residents, with extensive new information for the fines to cite the people who are a public nuisance when they have the fireworks. My main concern is that I live on a greenbelt, and the three houses that had the fireworks that got me irritated on this, and I started talking in January, is that all three have been replaced, thanks to code enforcement coming out and putting down what needed to be done. And so, that's why I really like in code enforcement. So, remember to call code enforcement about fireworks. You don't want your new neighbor to be mad at you for something that is better handled by code enforcement. Again, it's only seventy days until New Year's. I hope we have a safe and sane 2026 with no big problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Gigi.
Hello, everybody. So, um, I'm coming to speak on an item that you're gonna hear later, and I'm doing it because I've been doing Art in City Hall, as you can tell, out there, and it's been a three-day, non-stop thing, and I'm kinda tired. And I still have to go outside and finish the decorating. So, I wanna speak to you about the CH40, how important it is to our community, how much foot traffic, how many people are coming in from outside of our city just to see our art, to take pictures, to, uh, go into businesses, to buy things. Your support has been fantastic. The community support has been great, and the businesses have really been supportive, and we are hoping that you are going to support, um, making this area our official arts district. Uh, like I've said in the past, it's gonna bring a lot of support to our community, to our artists, uh, to our kids even. We're doing murals with San Juan, we're doing murals with Mesa, we are, we have had seventeen murals completed to date. We're working on two. The police did one, that is freaking fabulous, and FIRE will be doing one in the coming months. So, hoping for this support and definitely hoping you all will show up for Art in City Hall tomorrow from five to eight P.M. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gigi. Next speaker, please.
The next is a written public comment submitted by Alfred Sanchez. A service for Scott, Scotty Summerfield, will take place at the Celtic Cross Church at 5839 Dewey, October 23rd at 3:00 P.M. He will be missed by all his friends who loved him. He was proud to have served in the Army and was a resident of Citrus Heights. Anyone who would like further information can contact me. Alfred Sanchez, also known as Snackman Citrus Heights.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? All right, with that, we'll have the next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Great, thank you so much. Let's go ahead and start with, um, Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, let's see, since the last time, which was almost thirty days ago, um, I've attended no less than ten events. I will not bore you with the details of all ten events, um, but I do wanna make sure that you all understand that we have been so incredibly busy. So, uh, starting back, all the back to September 25th, there was the Chamber's Elected Officials' Reception, and that was a fantastic event, and I was so happy to see all of my colleagues there, but also to get to connect with business owners here in the City of Citrus Heights. The following day on the 26th, I went outside of my range and I went to Rancho Cudova to their chamber golf scramble with Sherry, our, uh, Executive Director for the Citrus Heights Chamber, and had a lot of fun, and, you know, I might've gotten the longest shot for women because I like the golf. Um, and then on October 1st, we had the Liveability Summit that was hosted by Valley Vision, and it was a great opportunity for us to connect. I unfortunately could not stay for these sessions that were happening, uh, around lunchtime, but hopefully, um, one of my colleagues can, uh, add a little bit more texture and color for that. And I'm gonna skip around again here so to leave something for everyone else to talk about. Um, on, on the 11th of October, I, the mayor and I were at the Citrus Heights Annual Chip In Day, which was so much fun, spreading bark, eating donuts, doing a lot of great work. Uh, the mayor and I, we planted a tree, which, uh, General Services promised us will not die because we touched it. Uh, we just, we actually just threw a little bit of dirt on it, we actually didn't actually plant it, it was already there. Um, but I also went that same day to Lichen Elementary and helped to do a garden build with Republic Services so that these youth can learn more about how to grow their own food and where food comes from and understanding that lifecycle. Um, the 13th, I was, I went and I did one of the judgings for the, uh, annual Republic Services, um, calendar poster things, right? So, lots and lots of art. I mean, there was like over a hundred posters that were submitted, and we, obviously, there's only twelve months in a year, so you can imagine how hard that was to select some folks. And on the 16th, I went to the, uh, Citrus Heights Police Activities League Golf Tournament, which was a blast. These folks, our, our department pulled that together with their Activities League, uh, Board in no less than two months. They, they had some complications with their first location, and they were able in two months to pull it together and had tons and tons of sponsors and tons of teams out there, and we were so happy to be out there just supporting the Police Activities League and making sure that our youth in Citrus Heights have an opportunity to become connected and build and foster great relationships with our police department. And I'll just leave it right there and stop there.
Wow, I'm tired just hearing your schedule. Councilmember Schaefer, what you been up to?
A lot. Uh, it's been a very, very, very busy month. I'm looking at my calendar, out of the last thirty days, there are only six days where I didn't have at least one thing every single day. Uh, lots of days, I had more than one thing to do, and I have a full-time job as well, so, um, and a business to run. So, I'll just give you the highlights. So, uh, on October 1st, the mayor and I had our two-by-two with San Juan Unified School District over at, um, uh, that was at Woodside School. Uh, it was a good meeting. Uh, then on October 3rd, I was at, uh, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SACOG, of retreat. This is, uh, where we set, uh, kind of our goals and, uh, and the board has input on, uh, kinda what we do for the next couple of years. Uh, and, uh, our own Ash Feeney was one of the, he was on a panel there. Um, and so that was October 3rd, and then October 6th, I attended, uh, and it was one of the best celebrations of life I have ever attended, and that was for Jessica Andrews, our, um, uh, I don't remember what her title was, but she ran the community center over there. It was a fantastic job. Her, her family just did an amazing job with that service. Uh, it was one, you know, somber, which they didn't really want it to be somber, but it was really, uh, very impactful, uh, and great. Um, so then on, uh, from October 8th to the 10th, I attended the, uh, Cal Cities, uh, Conference in Long Beach, where there were several sessions where we talked about ADUs, we learned about all different kinds of, uh, new laws and, and, um, and, um, initiatives that are coming down the line there. Uh, and then on October 13th, I actually came over here, uh, for those of you that had an opportunity to go through, it was in the community room on the cross the hall here, uh, where I reviewed and, uh, and voted on, uh, the artwork that the Citrus Heights kids did for the coming calendar for Republic Services. Really a, a fun thing to do, so. Uh, and then on the 16th, I was back at SACOG, uh, talking about, uh, funding issues and, uh, and what's the funding plan look like moving forward. It looks like everything's, uh, going to go well there. And then on the 18th, on Saturday, I attended the Citrus Heights Marching Band Parade, which was a, a great event, and, uh, I'm delighted to hear that they are gonna keep the parade on Grand Oaks Drive, cause I, I, uh, is it Avenue Boulevard, is it Drive? Anyway, Grand Oaks, whatever it is. Um, it's, it was, it's a really great neighborhood, a great event there, and, uh, lots of, uh, lots of people came out for that, so. With that, that wraps it up for me.
Vice Mayor, I have one more thing to add that's pretty important. Um, I also attended the Celebration of Life for Charlotte Crothers, our number-one PD volunteer, and, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't s- put that out there. Uh, Chief gave a very, very warm and colorful, um, description of all the things that Charlotte has done for us, and she will be dearly missed because she provided something for our police department that, there, there are very large shoes to fill for such, such a small woman. Um, her stature has nothing to do with the, the mark that she's left on our community, so, thank you.
Wonderful addition. Um, in addition to my colleagues here, I did attend the Assembly, uh, Assemblyman Hoover, Supervisor Rodriguez, act, um, community meeting last week. They gave us, um, a great update and kind of a precursor information on how homelessness, the homelessness, um, current information, and in, you know, to tee us up for a meeting that's forthcoming. Um, all my meetings, because it's been such a while that we haven't met, all the meetings I had last month are now coming back, and, um, I will be attending my Sacramento Air Quality Meeting, and they all happen tomorrow. Sacramento Air Quality Meeting tomorrow, um, and the Public Library, as well as, um, I recently attended my Chason Meeting, and if you don't attend a neighborhood association meeting, I am imploring you to do so. This is where you get all of your close neighbors to, uh, rally them for projects that we're doing in the city, announcing activities that you can do together, and really informing each other what's going on in the city. Not everybody can come here, um, but last evening when I attended Chason, I did tell them about all the wonderful things that we're doing in the next few days here at City Hall. So, you want to engage your community by engaging with your community. And with that, we'll have our next item.
The next item is the Consent Calendar. Item nine is the Approval of Minutes. Item 10 is the Office of Traffic Safety DUI Step Grant. Item 11 is Approval of Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement Creek Erosion and Bridge Scour Protection Project. Item 12 is Award of On-Call Professional Services Agreement for the Pavement Preservation Program. Item 13 is Award of Professional Services Agreement Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Silvent to Stock Ranch Extension Project. Item 14 is Police Department Emergency Communications Center Remodel Project Final Acceptance and Notice of Completion. And item 15 is Approval of Service Agreement Not to Exceed $178,000 for the Development of Preliminary Infrastructure Phasing Work for the Sunrise Tomorrow Project.
All right, do any of my colleagues have any interest in pooling for separate discussion, any item, or, um, any separate action? All right, hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Move approval.
I second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay, next item, please.
Next item is Public Hearing Number 16, Review Draft 2026 Annual Action Plan and Funding Recommendations for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The recommendations are to hear public testimony and feedback on the draft 2026 Annual Action Plan and proposed funding recommendations, and also to continue the final action until the November 12th, 2025 City Council Meeting.
All right, let's hear the presentation.
All right. Um, good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. Nicole Piva, the Housing and Human Services Program Coordinator, and I'm here tonight to go over the Draft 2026, um, Annual Action Plan and Funding Recommendations for the Community Development Block Grant Program. So, the purpose of tonight's item is to conduct a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG. We'll review and receive any public comment and feedback on the draft annual action plan, and then we'll continue this item for council's approval on November 12th. So, the action plan is a federally required document that outlines how the city will use its CDBG funds for the upcoming year. It serves as a roadmap for investing in programs, services, and projects to low-income and moderate residents. Um, a little summary of the plan, it focuses on public services that support vulnerable populations, investment in public infrastructure improvements, and outlines funding allocations for any activities. It also ensures consistency with HUD's national objective and the five-year consolidated plan, um, the goals and priorities of the CDBG program. This action plan marks the second year of the five-year consolidated plan. So, once the plan is adopted, it is submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, for review and final approval. The city is an entitlement community under the Pro- CDBG program. This means that the city receives an annual allocation, um, based on a HUD-determined formula, which, uh, considers population, housing conditions, and other community needs. In recent years, in 2024, we received $586,000, and in 2025, we received $633,000. So, given that fluctuation in annual funding, staff has used a conservative estimated allocation of $600, $600,000 in developing this plan. Also, um, this is an estimate because at the time when we prepared this plan, HUD has yet to release its official funding amount for program year 2026. We do anticipate receiving that grant award notification mid-July of next year. So, a breakdown of the budget, uh, fifteen percent goes towards public In recent years, in 2024, we received $586,000, and in 2025, we received $633,000. So given that fluctuation in annual funding, staff has used a conservative estimated allocation of $600,000, $600,000 in developing this plan. Also, this is an estimate because at the time when we prepared this plan, HUD has yet to release its official funding amount for program year 2026. We do anticipate receiving that grant award notification mid-July of next year. So a breakdown of the budget, 15% goes towards public services. These are nonprofits who provide a service to our residents. 20% goes towards the administration of the grant. This includes any public notices, environmental reviews, staff time trainings, et cetera. And then the remainder goes towards a capital project. This could be infrastructure improvements, housing rehab. So in a few slides, we'll go over the funding recommendations for the public services and the capital project pot of money. As part of the action plan development, HUD does require the city to follow a citizen participation plan. This plan outlines the policies and procedures on how we engage the public and how we plan to use the CDBG funds. So July 7th, an application period, we released the public service application. It was opened. Applications were promoted widely. We did post it on the city's request for proposal webpage, the Housing and Grants webpage. We did a distribution through the CDBG contact list. We have over 50 nonprofits who have interest in public service funding. Then July 17th, city staff hosted a funding workshop. This was anyone who wanted to attend, learn more about CDBG and the reporting requirements. And then August 1st, applications were due. August 29th, the Quality of Life Committee, which is comprised of Mayor Kerpenzi Costa and Councilmember Nelson, met with city staff, reviewed the applications, and they did provide the funding recommendations during that meeting. The next slide will go over those funding recommendations. A public notice announcing the availability of the draft action plan was published in the Citrus Heights Messenger, also in the Slavic and Spanish-language newspapers to ensure broad community outreach. Tonight, we're here to hear the first public hearing, any comment and feedback. And then November 12th, we'll hold our final public hearing for council to consider adoption of the plan. And then November 15th, the plan will be submitted to HUD for review and approval. Funding recommendations for public services. I'll provide a brief overview of the public service applications that we received and the recommendations, the Quality of Life Committee. This year, you can see, we exceeded that $90,000 pot of public service money. These applications reflect a range of needs from youth to seniors, renters, and low-income families. So the first one we have is Campus Life. They will provide an after-school program to about 90 youth. We have Meals on Wheels. We'll provide about 200 meals to seniors at the Crosswoods Cafe and a home-delivered service. We have Community Link Capital Region, also known as 211, and Project Sentinel. They have partnered to provide the Renters Helpline, and that is related to support fair housing and information to about 340 households. And to elaborate a little bit more on this application, the Renters Helpline, the goal is to reduce housing discrimination and increase awareness of fair housing laws and support individuals with disabilities. This program is a regional partnership between the City of Rancho Cordova, Elk Grove, Folsom, Sacramento, the County of Sacramento, and Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency. All jurisdictions do contribute funding to this project based on the number of rental units each jurisdiction has. So the city's contribution is $24,444. This program also fulfills the city's obligation to further fair housing. And then we have Sunrise Christian Food Ministry. There operate the Food Closet, serving over 2,000 households. Each application was reviewed for eligibility, alignment with CDBG priorities, and if the organization can carry out and deliver the program. All these nonprofits do meet that criteria. And also, I'd like to mention, because this is an estimated amount, if we do receive an increase or decrease, we'll proportionally adjust the amounts among Campus Life, Sunrise Christian, and Meals on Wheels. Also, part of this presentation, we'll hear directly from the nonprofits. This is an opportunity for them to share about their services. And then Funding Recommendation for a Capital Project. In partnership with General Services, the pavement resurfacing project, we're recommending $390,000. This is for installing ADA-compliant ramps, and also, this is a very exciting project. More than $700,000 in CDBG funds have gone towards the 2025 Accessibility and Drainage Project, and over 70 curb ramps have been constructed. So with this recommendation, General Services will be able to continue to provide those accessibility improvements. And with that, and staff recommendation is to hear public testimony and feedback on the drafting annual action plan and continue this item to November 12th.
Thank you so much for your report, Nicole. Are there any questions from councilmembers? All right, hearing done, I'll open the public hearing. Danielle, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we have two speaker cards. First, I'd like to welcome Ellie Jones.
Hello, council. Just want to say I'm grateful to be here, thankful to be here. And first, I just want to thank you guys for the recommendation for this. And also, just want to highlight, oh, I'm Elieazar Jones, the record. I'm the director at the Cyanide Center. I just want to highlight a few things that we have going on there and kind of what we do. We serve 90, 90 kids that are underserved, low-income, vulnerable, at-risk. We provide them with sports opportunities, recreational activities, mentoring, homework help, homework assistance, educational games, technology, information. We're also somewhat of a technology center. Provide meals for them each and every day, kids that sometimes don't eat at all. I have kids who come, literally, and I'm like, "How you doing?" "I haven't eaten anything all day." I'm like, "Hey, come in here, let me provide you whatever you need." We have different meals every single day. So we try to provide the most nutritious meals we possibly can for the kids each and every day, because we understand that some of these kids just don't eat. Also, provide life skills, life skill classes. So bi-weekly, we have speakers who come in to provide their life experiences to the kids, because I know some of these kids don't quite understand what opportunities are out there, or maybe don't believe that they have the same opportunities as other people in different areas. So we've had speakers who are from the area, who are able to speak to these kids and speak to, be able to relate to them with, being able, be, be, being from that, from the same area as they are, and be able to explain to them, like, "I was here, I've been where you were at, I had a home life that wasn't so great. I was able to persevere, get through things that I didn't think I was able to get through," and be able to just relate to them, and being able to see that, see some of these kids, their eyes open up, and be able to ask questions to these people, because they have the same kind of dreams that they, that the speaker had as well, being able to come, come to them and to explain different avenues and different ways to be able to become successful. As well, we have baking classes. We have volunteers who come to bake with the kids, which is great and amazing to see. Some of these kids don't get one-on-one time with their parents, especially when it comes to being in the kitchen and just being able to bake and have a good time. We actually just had that today, which was, which was great to see, be able to see kids smile and just have a good time while they're there. As well, we have opportunities in participating in day trips, summer camps, college tours. So some of these kids, you know, they don't, they don't really have the opportunity to, on their own, from at home, to go to, let's say, Santa Cruz. Sometimes we take kids' summer camp to Santa Cruz, and some of these kids have never seen the beach before. Some of these kids have never seen the beach before, and it's just a great opportunity to be able to provide for these kids, and with you guys' help and support, all these things are possible, and be able to help the community, not only with the kids, but their parents as well, and just provide groceries to support, emotional, and things of that nature. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Our next speaker?
We've actually received a couple more cards, but the next speaker is Jennifer Mcello.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council, and I'm Jennifer Mcello from Meals on Wheels. I'm the Director of Programs, and I just want to express my gratitude for the funding recommendation from the city staff. That will allow us to serve another 4,000 meals in the City of Citrus Heights to approximately 211 seniors. This year, we've, we're just currently finishing up the third quarter, and we've served 19,400 meals to 164 seniors so far this, this year. The Crosswoods Cafe is open and doing well, three days per week. We're serving about 10 to 15 participants a day, so we're making good progress on this year's grant and looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
This is specifically for Meals on Wheels. Can you roll back to that, the slide where the allocations are there? And I think you said it was 200, you're serving 211 seniors, but there's, you're serving them three meals a day, or you're, say, so you said that you're serving, for $16,000, you're serving 4,000 meals?
4,000 meals.
That's about $4.
We tend to serve one meal per day.
Okay.
Monday through Friday, so not every senior gets a meal every single day.
So a senior gets a meal every day?
Not normally, no. Home-delivered participants can get a box of five, and the average is about 15 meals per week, because a lot of them miss a, miss a meal, I'm sorry, miss a meal delivery.
Okay.
Once in a while, or aren't, oh.
I just, where does the 4,000 meals a year come from? Where does the 4,000 meals a year?
The 4,000 meals comes from $4 per meal for the funding requests that we typically requested, the $16,000, $4 per meal.
Seems like a pretty good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker card, please.
The next speaker is April Jisik.
Hello, and thank you for inviting us back to give a quick update on the Sunrise Christian Food Ministry. My name's April Jisik. I'm the Director of Operations. We are knee-deep in Thanksgiving planning, and we were swarmed over there tonight, so I'm sorry for my tardiness, but we came in just in time. I wanted to give you an update on our 2024 numbers. So in 2024, we served 34,000 households, which are duplicated, but 2,000 of those unduplicated households were of Citrus Heights, who can visit us up to one time a month, and if they are unhoused, they can come every day that we are open to receive a SAC lunch. That, those distributions are comprised of food that we recover from local stores. And last year, our volunteers recovered 1.5 million pounds of food from our local retailers like Sam's and Costco, Safeway, Food Max, all of our partner agencies here in the city. We go and get that five days a week. We come back, our volunteers sort through it, we bag it up, and it goes out the same day. On top of that, we had another 500,000 pounds of that's given to us from Sacramento Food Bank that we then also bag up. So that makes a grand total last year that our volunteers bagged up and handed out 2 million pounds of food to families in our community that are in need. On top of that, we do an annual distribution of 2,000 households for Thanksgiving, which is coming up next month. We're passing out reservations for that. We're excited to also invite Assemblyman Josh Hoover and his team out to come and serve around the Christmas season. They're going to come out on December 12th and help us give out food just ahead of Christmas. So we're very excited for that. They have supported us at Thanksgiving time for the last four years, giving us funds to help to offset the cost of giving out our Thanksgiving distributions. We're just excited to be able to receive city support again. We couldn't do what we do without the help of the city. We have lots of businesses in town that stand beside us and behind us and support us, but without the city on our side, it would be really hard to do the work that we do and have the people trust us the way that they do. So we're grateful for that. We are super grateful for the new partnerships that we're making, courtesy of, like, our business partners, like, partners like Grocery Outlet. We now are able to provide food to the Veterans Community Center on a weekly basis, where they can come through and pick up fresh produce and snacks and baked goods and protein to be able to serve good, healthy, wholesome meals to our veterans, and also make them available, make them aware of the other opportunities available to perceive nutritious food here onsite at the Food Closet. We've increased our home deliveries to 15 homebound senior deliveries per week with our partnership with 2on1. We're just excited, all the opportunities that we have to serve our community here in Citrus Heights and beyond. And we know it's only going to get worse with how things are rolling out next month, so thank you for your support. Any questions?
Thank you so much, April. Any questions? All right, our next speaker, please.
The last speaker card I have on this item is Carol Khan.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Carol Khan. I'm the Executive Director of Project Sentinel, and I want to thank you sincerely for your continued support in ensuring that the residents of Citrus Heights have access to strong housing protections. Project Sentinel is honored to participate in the Sacramento County Consolidated Plan alongside the county and five of their partner cities. Our Fair Housing Center is staffed by 14 dedicated professionals, including a director, managing attorney, staff attorney, coordinators and take counselors, and an outreach coordinator, who collectively investigate over 400 housing discrimination complaints each year. We conduct audits, education, and outreach to prevent discrimination in the community of Citrus Heights, and we provide training to landlords and property managers to help them meet their fair housing obligations. Roughly one-third of our investigations reveal evidence of discrimination, with many cases successfully conciliated by our staff, and others are referred to enforcement agencies. Among those agencies is HUD itself or the California Civil Rights Department. Recently, we resolved a Citrus Heights case involving source of income and disability discrimination against a senior with disabilities. Working in partnership with the Civil Rights Department, the case was settled with $14,500 in damages going to the client, dismissal of an eviction action, waiver of some $12,000 in back rent, and corrective actions requiring fair housing postings and policy review for all tenants in the complex to be aware of their protections. Thank you again for helping ensure that equitable access to housing remains a reality for all residents here in Citrus Heights. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Khan? I actually have a question. I'm curious, if you have the statistic, how many cases have you worked total this year so far in Citrus Heights?
Specifically in Citrus Heights, I think we're getting towards, from July forward, I don't have the exact number, but it's somewhere close to at least handling intake and counseling for 10 residents, somewhere around there, 10 to 12. And then it will always be dependent from there, filtering down as to what elements are presenting for fair housing action. But everybody's getting education and counseling, so I'll say that, yeah.
Education's important.
Yes, it is. It's empowering.
What other cities are you providing the same services?
So we, we participate in a funders group consortium, so it's Sacramento County itself, Sacramento City, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, and Elk Grove, and together, the county, the city, and also the, the housing authority for Sacramento is also a participant in the consortium. So between the five of us, we're all identifying fair housing and fighting discrimination.
Are these, are these mostly apartment complexes that are?
Mostly, yes. Yeah. We do see a lot of that, and-
Communities have a lot more apartment complexes than others.
I will say to you that Sacramento County as a whole is a very busy place. So there's definitely the need there. There's definitely the education need and for tenants to be more aware of their protections, but also for landlords and property managers to be a little bit better with their compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
All right, any additional comments? All right, public hearing's closed. Any additional comments or questions from the council for Ms. Piva? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Continuing, right. Oh?
16.
Let's see.
Yes, continue till next meeting.
All right, so we have heard our public- All right, so we have heard our public testimony and feedback, and then we will hear you back on November 12th. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 17, designation of a Citrus Heights Arts District. The recommendation is to consider adoption of a resolution in support of designating a Citrus Heights Arts District in the city of Citrus Heights.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Amy Van, City Clerk. So I'm here tonight to give a presentation on designation of a Citrus Heights Arts District. So at the August 13th City Council meeting, the City Council requested a future discussion item to consider designating, the designation of an official arts district within the city of Citrus Heights. Recently, the city has supported a variety of new arts and culture initiatives, including several new murals that have been led by the Citrus Heights, by Citrus Heights Arts that have been installed along Auburn Boulevard corridor, which is enhancing the area's visual character and promoting community pride through public art. Relatedly, the City Council had taken an economic development research trip to Colorado and visited the 4D West Arts District, which transformed a once underutilized area into a creative destination centered around art, culture, and community. So there's been a growing interest in exploring a similar pathway for Auburn Boulevard. So following council's request for an item, staff met with the Arts and Culture Two by Two Committee, which is comprised of council members Nelson and Middleton. We met on September 22nd, and so tonight I will be presenting the committee's recommendations. So with that, as a result of the meeting on, in September 22nd, the Arts and Culture Two by Two recommendations are as followed. The first is consider a resolution in support of designating a Citrus Heights Arts District, and I will discuss the proposed location on the next slide in just a moment. The second is consider developing partnerships with local artists, nonprofit organizations such as Citrus Heights Arts and other interested organizations, and including the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. This could include in-kind support, shared event promotion, or use of city and/or private spaces for arts programming. The third is develop a menu of options for art installations, signage, and other placemaking components for City Council consideration. One item that was discussed was a public bench art program concept where commercial property owners and businesses could sign up to host a bench in front of their property and by making a small contribution toward materials or installation. Fourth is designing a Citrus Heights Arts logo for the area, including a call to artists for its design and hosting a community launch to discuss the, to introduce the program. Fifth is consider future opportunities for estate certification of a cultural arts district. And then lastly, utilize existing available city funding to support arts district initiatives, which would be from the Economic Development Grant funding or History and Arts Grant funding and such. So the proposed location that was discussed is the area along Auburn Boulevard from the Sylvan Community Center, which is on Community Drive, all the way to the city's northern limits. The area has existing arts-related uses and historical significance, and as mentioned earlier, several new murals have been installed along the Boulevard. When considering a designation of a cultural arts district, it's important to define the area so that the most effective and impactful plans can be made. Designating a Citrus Heights Arts District would provide a framework to encourage creative investment by artists and local businesses, promote cultural tourism, and support local economic development, activate underutilized spaces for arts activities, and strengthen community partnerships. And then lastly, the action that is being requested by the City Council tonight is to consider a resolution in support of designating a Citrus Heights Arts District in the city of Citrus Heights. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, do we have any questions?
No, but as someone who's served on the subcommittee, if there's any questions that council has for me, I'm happy to answer as best I can.
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was our goal.
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 2025, a resolution of City Council of Citrus Heights, California in support of designating a Citrus Heights Art District in the city of Citrus Heights.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
And we have no opposed? All right, motion passes. We now have an art district. I am excited.
All right, thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 18, amending various sections of Chapter 18 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code relating to buildings and building regulations and Chapter 38 relating to fire prevention and protection. And there's recommendations, three separate actions. Item 18A is to introduce for a first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 18 and adopting by reference the 2025 California Administrative Code in addition to all of the codes that are listed on the agenda for the council's review. Item 18B is to adopt resolution expressing findings for adoption of local amendments to the Title 24 California Code of Regulations 2025 Edition. And item 18C is to introduce for a first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the Municipal Code and adopting by reference the ordinance prepared by the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District and the 2025 California Fire Code.
Good evening, Council. Casey Kempner, your Community Development Director, here tonight, joining our Chief Building Official, Joe Cuff, our Deputy Fire Marshal, Diana Schmidt, and our Fire Marshal, Amy Nigren. So tonight, we're considering, next slide, please. Tonight, we're considering the 2025 Building Code amendments. Every three years, the state of California passes new codes, and we have to go through the similar process to update codes and incorporate them in our ordinance and any local amendments related to changes that are required to help serve our community better. This was, this item stemmed from a council strategic goal from March to make sure that we are strongly advancing flexibility where we can in the code. The state really dictates a lot of it, but where we could have flexibility, we wanted to make sure we built that into these ordinances, which we have. And part of that was working closely with Metro Fire on their portion of the code to make sure anything and everything we can do to make it easier to get businesses in our existing buildings was what we're going to do. So next slide, please. We also had an economic development work plan calling for similar, working with Metro Fire, to simplify and clarify code requirements, particularly with existing buildings. We don't build a lot of new buildings, but we do try to repurpose a lot of existing buildings, so it's really important as part of our economic work plan to get people back into some of our buildings that were single-purpose built and bring in different uses, which require different requirements, and we wanted to make sure we streamlined those as much as possible. Before I turn it over to the team, I just wanted to give a quick shout out. While Dr. Huber and I were involved in the strategic planning sort of things of this, the nuts and bolts and those that rolled up our sleeves are over here on the table. They had to peruse numerous binders of new fire codes, make sure they understand, and building codes, make sure they understand them, and see what works and what doesn't work, and work collaboratively, and I can't thank our partners at Metro Fire enough for working with us and getting, rolling up their sleeves and making sure any old amendments that were no longer relevant are out of, off the table, and we really have the most streamlined code that we can have to benefit our businesses. So while we move forward, we're going to continue to work collaboratively with Metro Fire to be pragmatic and implement these codes and get new businesses into our buildings. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe, who'll just give a brief overview, won't get you too, too much into the technical, but just kind of overview what the code cycle includes, as well as answering questions you guys may have.
Thank you, Casey. Joe Cuff, Chief Building Official. This is just a brief overview of how local code adoptions happen. The state of California adopts new building standards every three years, hands those off to the cities, and we're allowed to make certain amendments to those codes so that they fit our local jurisdiction. We can't establish new standards, but we can work with what they've given us and try to see how they work for our community. The codes that we amend are contained within our Citrus Heights Municipal Code in Chapter 18 for buildings and building regulations. We have 24 articles in that chapter. We amended 13 of those articles, six remained unchanged, and we added four new articles based off of what the state code has changed for this cycle. Chapter 38 is in the Fire Protection and Prevention Codes. Metro Fire adopted and amended the 2025 California Fire Code, and then they published their own ordinance that we adopt on our level. We partnered with them to develop a comprehensive plan addressing the issues impacting our existing non-residential buildings, and they provided clear, community-focused guidance for compliance with state and local fire regulations. They were very open and helpful in making sure that Citrus Heights can work towards reusing the available stock that we have and not put too hard of a burden on the people that are trying to put businesses in our community. One thing that did come through the state that was new for us was there was a bill passed this year that modifies the state building code and limits the modifications that we can make to the residential codes this year. Due to the fires that happened in Southern California and Northern California over the last few years, the Building Standards Commission determined that the 2022 codes that we are doing right now will stay that way for, through the 2031 code cycle for residential units only. So we're not going to increase the code from '22 to '25 for anything that's residential until 2031, so that hopefully will help people be able to afford to continue to rebuild and get back on their feet without putting too much undue stress on them. And these were the motions that have been asked for.
All right, first, do we have any questions? All right, we'll go with.
I tried to search for this for some specific information, because we have a lot of swimming pools. What's changed about the swimming pool law? I looked at the staff report, I really didn't see anything really descriptive about what, I don't know what the law was before. I own a swimming pool, but quite honestly, I'm not super up on the, so why do we specifically call out swimming pools and spas and hot tubs here?
We call them out only because there's a separate set of standards for them outside of the normal building code. It has its own set of standards. The state of California doesn't adopt an actual swimming pool code that they hand out to, to the local jurisdictions, so we have to adopt our own. So we, by law, we have to adopt a code, so after some work determining how we want to do that, we've determined that adopting the International Pool Swimming Code is the best fit for our community, and then the state also has some requirements for barriers and safety equipment, so we have to adopt that as well.
I guess I'm good, because I've already, I've had work done to the pool, and it's passed.
There you go.
I guess I'm okay.
Councilmember Middleton, you had a comment?
Yeah, not a question, just a comment, and which was, thank you so much for working to streamline the process so that businesses, you know, can actually get into these older buildings and not have to do all these massive upgrades that impede, you know, the whole point of, you know, bringing business to our community. I know that it was a difficult, you know, needle to thread, and I'm just so excited that you guys figured out a way to do it, so thank you so much for doing that.
And I simply want to say, I like it when things stay deleted. You know, we have enough regulation to prevent business and families to come to our community. When I see deleted, I believe that just, you know, makes, streamlines the process for people to participate in the economy known as Citrus Heights, so I appreciate your work there. I hear we've been given special permission to take 1, 2, and 3, or A, B, and C in our agenda, just called out by Motion 1, 2, and 3, or A, B, C, however you want to do.
And I'm prepared to read them.
All right. And we apparently don't need to read them.
No.
Just looking at the city attorney, making sure, can we get a head nod there? Okay.
We do want to do it one at a time, but they could be short, just so moved, yes. Saying, we do need three separate actions, but you don't need to read them all.
I remove, I move that we adopt Motion 1.
Second.
As written.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we adopt Motion 2, as written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Oh, hold on. Well, first. Those in favor? Aye. Okay.
I move that we adopt Motion 3, as written.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, sounds like we have some, some yeses, and next item, please.
Next item is department report, item 19, update on code enforcement efforts within the city's commercial corridors from our police department.
All right, good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council. Lieutenant William Dunne with the Police Department, and with me tonight is?
Police Services Supervisor Debra Miller.
So we are here tonight to highlight the proactive work of our code enforcement team, specifically within our commercial corridors, aligning with the city's strategic goal of diversifying for a vibrant, vibrant economy and to support the shop local experience. Also, with the continued support of our city council, the code enforcement team over the past several years has transitioned from being more of a complaint-based response to be more proactive as it relates to supporting our economic development within the city and our commercial corridors. So over the last couple of years, we began implementing different strategies. We have conducted internal analysis to enhance our team's deployments, and what this pretty much means is we've identified the importance of having our code enforcement officers within specific districts, within specific beats, or two-beat patrol system, as well as we have assessed technology solutions to allow our code enforcement officer to be in the field more, which would streamline their administrative processes. We're reviewing ordinances in the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, which I'll get into a little bit later towards the end of the presentation. Also, we attend and utilize collaborative meetings with our internal and external stakeholders to increase information sharing, which aids our deployment strategy and overall customer service. And since 2024, our code enforcement team has held monthly proactive enforcements focused in our business districts and corridors within our city. So on this slide, you will see a comparison in the blue box on top, which highlights the years of 2023 versus 2024, as well as the percentage change, where you'll see pretty much a change of total incidents between those two years, a 41% increase. Citizen-generated complaints, 2023, 1671 to '24, 1889, which is 13% increase. Our proactive inspections went up 127% between those two years, and cases opened in 2023 was 24, followed by cases closed in 2023 is 24 as well. In 2024, under three cases were opened, followed by 100 cases which were closed, which for cases open, that's 329% difference, followed by 317% difference for cases closed. The bottom box, you will see a comparison between January through September of 2024, as well as January, September of 2025. Total incidence, 24% increase, up this year to 2,890. The big thing to look here, which highlights the proactiveness of the team, is citizen complaints have gone down 47%, where our proactive inspections have gone up 144%. And then comparing our cases open versus cases closed, 153% change between 24... And then comparing our cases open versus cases closed, 153% change between 24 to 25, as well as cases closed, 142% difference as well. And then up in the top right corner, you'll see the most common code violations that our team addresses, which is neglected landscaping, trash and debris, as well as graffiti. So here you'll see just kind of a highlight of some of the before and afters, and this is just a small sample of the good work that our team does, and by identifying some of the blight concerns within the community. You have neglected landscape, as you can see, and then towards the right, you'll see, within a day, we were able to cover up the, the gang graffiti, which is on the right, which we want to make sure that's covered up. And then also, you'll see some proactive progress. This is one of the bigger projects that code enforcement was a part of, and you'll just kind of see how it deteriorated, and then kind of where we're building up forward, moving on into the future. Throughout this year, the code enforcement team took a practice stance as relates to addressing food vendor enforcement. The idea behind this is to ensure that mobile food vendors are operating within a special business license, temporary use permits are obtained, as well as health permits from the county as well. And the idea behind this is that we do support business, but we want to make sure that all businesses within our city are operating within the same rules and regulations, whether it's our brick and mortars or our food vendors as well. So that was kind of where we are right now, and where we're looking forward into the future. We are going to be, or we're currently working with the Community Development Department, reviewing current practices and preparing for amendments to our food vendor ordinance to enhance the shop local experience. As well, we are in the research phase of amending the ordinance for massage establishments, and the idea behind this is to prevent illicit businesses from operating within our city of Citrus Heights and aligns with our department's human, anti-human traffic initiative. And as I close this update, I just want to take a special moment to recognize Supervisor Miller and the code enforcement team for all the great work that they have done in the years of 2024 and 2025, and at this time, we will answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions?
A question about food trucks. Can they park anywhere? Do they have to show evidence that they have permission from the ownership to park in that area?
They have to have permission from the property owner, and that's got to be a written consent that's submitted into planning. They, the temporary use permit is issued for a six-month period. The whole purpose behind that is that, the hope is, it's a temporary permit for them to operate in hopes that maybe down the future, they're looking for more of a brick and mortar or permanent restaurant.
Are they allowed to park on the street?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I kind of have a follow-up question to that, because we have a business that pops up that literally is not a mobile food truck. He sets up right outside our border, and it's just a pop-up tent on Fair Oaks Boulevard. Have we done any enforcement or coordinated enforcement with the county for that?
I am not aware of the pop-up tent, but I'm more than happy to hand that off to our partners in the county.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll give you more information after this. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for your good work.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
The next item is city manager items.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. Ashvene, your city manager, I do have a few updates for you this evening. One, there's been a lot of discussion about an upcoming meeting with the city and the county, as well as all the other Sacramento cities in the Sacramento County jurisdiction, and it's on homelessness services and behavioral health. I will have mayors from each one of the cities, as well as the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, actually, I believe it's the entire Board of Supervisors, and the entire Sacramento City Council, as long as, and also one mayor representative from each city. And city managers from each one of the cities are going to attend this meeting on October 28th. It's a, a public meeting, a special joint meeting. It's going to be held downtown at the Secopulous Library Gallery at 828 I Street, and it's a, a joint meeting to talk about homelessness and regional collaboration efforts. There will be a series of presentations that will be done at that meeting and dialogue as well, public comment opportunities. For more information on it, you can see here, there's a link for the agenda and materials that will be posted. Starts at 10:00 a.m. on the 28th. Other upcoming events, we have, that was spoken to earlier during public comment, and you may have seen it coming in tonight. City Hall is looking very well decorated with some beautiful art. There's going to be an art and City Hall reception tomorrow night that's presented by Citrus Heights Arts, who's been working diligently to get the art hung for a wonderful display and exhibition, and that will be tomorrow night, October 23rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then the art will hang for approximately a quarter of the year, so about three months. So we're very, very much looking forward to, to that event, that evening, and enjoying that art here for the coming months. While we're on the art topic, Citrus Heights Arts is holding their art beat. This is something that the City Council also provided a sponsorship for. That is on this Saturday, October 25th, from 12:00 to 4:00 at Rush Community Park. And we also have, on October 30th, we have a couple of events. One, Supervisor Rodriguez is going to be having a community meeting here at the City Hall Chambers. That's October 30th at 5:30 p.m. There's also, the Citrus Heights Police Activities League is holding their annual trunk retreat that same night in their parking lot at 6315 Fountain Square Drive, and that starts at 5:00 p.m. There's parking in and around the police station, but certainly the north lot is full with the activity event, so we have additional parking here at City Hall and, and some of the surrounding lots, but that's, as the council knows, a very well-attended event and a lot of fun. Smash Sacramento. This is a special Halloween festival that's going to be occurring. It's at 6412 Tupelo Drive, October 30th, 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. There's a number of sponsors, inclusive of a sponsorship by city of Citrus Heights. There's going to be all kinds of fun there, axe-throwing, airbrush art, costume contests, a pumpkin smash, a car smash. Hopefully, that's just something that's happening in the facility. Certainly, that's going to be a controlled event, for sure. Live music, and also a vendor fair. So should be an interesting event, looks like a lot of fun, October 30th, 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. State of the City's coming up, so learn what's happened over the course of the last year and where we're headed. So that's on November 6th, here at City Hall, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The mayor, Mayor Karpinski-Costa, and myself will be addressing the city that evening, and there'll be a welcome reception from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. The welcome reception is a ticketed event. It's put on by the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. It's $25 for chamber members, $35 for non-members, but includes some beverages, light bites, and most importantly, networking. But the State of the City address is a free event that's open to the public, and again, that starts at 6 o'clock on November 6th. In honor of Veterans Day, I thank all our veterans for their service. We will have City Hall closed on Tuesday, November 11th, and we will also be putting posts out for any of kind of our local Veterans Days events, and we encourage the community to attend those, and I know the council often attends those as well. And that concludes my updates.
Wow, what a season of activities in our community. I love hearing that. Okay, and let's see, next item is items requested by council members, future agenda items?
I have one.
All right, go for it, Tim.
So if I could get a second, the, they briefly talked about this at Cal Cities. SB 79 did pass, and this is, a state is, it's a mandate for local, against local land use for, if you have a, a property within half a mile of a bus stop, it relieves the developer of lots of restrictions and removes lots of local control. What I'd like to suggest is that we join the Amicus Brief. It costs 2,500 bucks, and I'd like to talk about that.
Second.
We'll bring that forward item, bring that item forward accordingly.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, and our next item. Look at that, we have no more items. It is adjournment. Thank you so much for attending our meeting tonight.